The lawyers' planning commission meeting will come to order. And Chris is going to lead us in at the invocation.
Loving and gracious God be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for those present and not present. Amen.
If everybody will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda Morrison.
Here.
Christopher Spivey.
Here.
Eric Mylum.
Here.
Chad Bennett.
Here.
Ruth Ann Jones. Jeb Joseph Fleisch.
Here.
John Atkins.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start with approval of the minutes for July 25th, 2024. Has everybody had an opportunity to look over them? Do I hear any corrections? Do I have a motion for approval?
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which minutes? Which set of minutes?
I said July 25th, 2024.
Motion for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Are you going to call people's names or just?
We don't have to unless you want to roll call.
Yeah, that's fine. Anyone opposed? Okay, the next one is approval of minutes from September 25th, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to look over? Any corrections?
That was October.
So minor corrections.
So there, yeah, what you pointed out on.
Okay, on page two, the second paragraph under business items, Mr. Mylum made a motion, and also seconded was Mr. Mylum, and that will be corrected once you get your notes.
I'll go back and pull from the notes and have that corrected.
I was busy that day.
You were. Okay, do we want to make a motion to approve with corrections? Do I have a motion? Make a motion that we approve them with the correction? Do I have a second?
Second.
John Atkins make the second. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, the October minutes, they're not done.
Not ready yet.
We won't talk about that. Okay, the first item for business items. Review of the preliminary plat for major subdivision Silver Oak cottages Phase Two and Three. Parcel number 176-00-00-0030, Diamond Shores.
And the applicant is here. We do have, so it's not, it needed some corrections before we ought to give a formal approval for the major subdivision, a formal review with it. So it's really more for a discussion topic tonight. They have made some corrections to, based on what we had sent for the recommendations whenever Walkmaw made their review, and that is in your packet as well. But I've not had a chance to go through, we've not had a chance to look through the corrections that were made yet. So that's why we've got it on here, more so as discussion, so you can see the layout, kind of the circulation of the property itself. This one. If you remember. So on your handouts, there was the four lots right here along North Cox. That was the minor subdivision, which basically was Phase One of all of it. So now we're looking at Two and Three. So you see the overall layout for it. We were, at first, looking at it as kind of splitting Phase Two and Three as separate approvals, but with the drainage layout for it, it shouldn't work that way with it. So basically, you'd have approval of Two and Three, similar to how Meadowlock was, where you approved both phases in one approval for that. So it's kind of same layout for that as far as processing goes. You're just looking at two of them, one starting before the other. And they're here for any questions, or if they wanted to add any comments to that as well.
Just, this is the same, over on North Cox, right across from the cold storage where we had the trees were cut.
Yes.
And then we're back to this.
Yes, yes.
So is the representative here to kind of give us the overall view? What they did? Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Ashley Cowan from Diamond Shores. The handout that you have in front of you is the updated plan that Meredith alluded to, that has addressed the comments from the Walkmaw Regional Council government. Just to point out a few of the design features that we've included. The lots that are facing North Cox Road have a backout feature on their driveway. That way, no lot is actually backing out onto North Cox. They can actually do a little turnaround and drive out facing North Cox as a safety feature. And we also have the drainage on North Cox piped. And we were able to work with a CDOT to get that drainage addressed. You'll notice that we have open space on North Cox for that new road that we're working on, for the third phase. That is actually going to be some landscaping for the beautification of the entry to that portion of the neighborhood. We thought that that would be a good feature to beautify the entries to the neighborhood. We also have, as you can see, sidewalks. We've done sidewalks down that third phase so that it's a walkable pedestrian friendly community. You'll also see a change from what's in the PowerPoint versus what's in your handout. We've reduced the number of lots on cul-de-sac from five to four. Now those lots have a slightly wider road frontage, and we have been able to push the actual building pad a little forward, instead of being closer to the back yard. It's going to be a little less still, which is always a good thing. We've also been able to provide a great deal of open space in this neighborhood, which is, of course, not a requirement of Forsyth's subdivision development regulations, but something that we felt was pretty necessary in this development. So it's something that we've provided as an extra amenity for this neighborhood. I also wanted to point out that this neighborhood does meet the Ori County stormwater regulations, so it will address 20% of the, it will reduce the amount of stormwater that runs off the site by 20% in a 25-year event. So we have made sure that this doesn't meet that requirement. And we do have the civil plan set, ready to go. It's been submitted, like Meredith said. I can address any questions that you have. We have made sure that there's public access to the open space area, that there's public drainage, and access to the ponds through the lots. Who does any questions that you have?
Everything in the open space area, that still has the woods on it, right?
Yes, yes ma'am, yes. The trees are still there in that open space area. Of course, not with ponds will be, but.
Right.
But the wetland area does still have the trees.
I know that was a concern or question some of the adjoining property owners had. Have, essentially, has Phase Two and Phase Three already been cleared? I haven't driven back there in a while.
Yes, except for, of course, the wetland area.
You guys aren't clearing any more than that. Everything is clear as what it is right now.
I believe so, yes. I'm not sure if all the stumps have been removed.
I don't think so.
Yeah, there's been no stumps.
I've run up that road quite a bit, so. And everything from the Walkmaw recommendations has been satisfied, or you need to verify?
So that's where I just got these updates this week, but that way that you were aware of, get there and you kind of, you've got an extra meeting to look at it as well. I've not had a chance to go back and look over this, yet. So everything that you've got in the PowerPoint is actually from the original submission for it. So some of those numbers, figures, layout is different than what Ashley's talking about now.
And the sidewalks, those are only for the neighborhood, that's not for Cox Road?
You're correct. So that new road that we're putting in is a private road, so that is just for this subdivision.
And is Phase One completed?
No ma'am, we still do not have our Phase One figure of it from April of February, so we're still waiting on that.
We're waiting very patiently for it.
And I've talked with them on it, we're getting them for them.
Do you have any other questions?
Okay.
Can I ask you to address?
One, the private road going in, is it pretty much standard-sized road?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. It needs all the requirements that need to be.
Emergency vehicles and all that stuff.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes. Turnaround signs, all of those, right base.
Is there anything that you'd like to speak on behalf of the city?
I'll, because my conversation this week was with Jamie, works with Ashley, so I'd not talked to Ashley on it, but I did mention to Jamie about the street names.
Yes, and we're addressing that with Ori County at the moment, the difference. Some of the issue is sometimes with 911, if somebody calls, there might be a misunderstanding about recognizing somebody's accent and then maybe misinterpret the name of the street. So we are addressing the street name, the Ori County.
So that's all I have at the moment, without being able to go through all of them.
So pretty much tonight is just kind of educating us about this. Anybody else have any questions?
Because something's happening with that piece of property.
What?
It's because something's happening with that piece of property now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, can we move on to the next business item? Discussion about the text amendment to zoning ordinance for mobile food slash beverage vendors. And this is the packet that we're referencing, right?
Yes, all of those, you can actually take the paperclip off of those, because there's a few, I've got safety. So if you look, I don't know if you're already yet, but if you look at your, the PowerPoint, so I've got some kind of just simple questions, you know, what are we talking about? Where are these, and why is planning commission talking about it? So essentially, what it's referring to, City of Greer, whenever I went to a, it was actually a business license training seminar, spring of last year, they did a really good presentation for how they manage mobile food vendors, mobile food or beverage vendors. They're not, because they're not a brick and mortar in the city, so how do you regulate that with it? But what planning commission would be looking at on that standpoint is more on the side of where can they be? Similar to like a brick and mortar, say Shorty's. If they wanted to go and open a Shorty's Number Two over in Fox Bay, they couldn't, because it's on residential. So it's kind of where should they go? Is there any special restrictions? Because they are mobile, you know, is it fair with the brick and mortar? So it's more discussion, just to get feedback from y'all, to see, look through how they address theirs. In their handout, they actually set their dimension from a brick and mortar of 250, I think.
I believe that's what it was.
And that would, so that would be looking at kind of like a radius. The example that I've given whenever asked about it is more, say, you've got, food truck wants to set up over in Carquest Parking Lot. Well, you've got Bojangles, you've got Fowler's, you've got any other ones that are within whatever radius that was set. You know, you don't want to hurt your ones that have put in the time, put in the money to have a brick and mortar establishment by some that will come, that aren't necessarily in the city. And it's really more to formalize kind of what we're doing already with it, but our use table, if you look, and you've got it in your packet as well. So you have, these are, remember that this zoning ordinance table was adopted back in the late nineties. So it has eating places and drinking places. And they refer to the sick code, which you have on there, is the standard identification, classification, what is it called? Oh, sorry, standard industrial classification. So if you go, essentially, you'd look up these codes right here, so 5812 and 5813. If you go through to OSHA, they define that as 5812, these. Well, if you look, it doesn't specify to mobile, so to speak. We've had some in the city, but we've kind of had to kind of use the same guidelines of where they could go, similar to how we have the brick and mortars. The issue is, if you go back to here, with your parking. So your required parking, or where do you want them to set up on a lot? You know, would it be feasible for a food truck to set up on a C1 district parcel? Essentially, that's your downtown. C1 allows for it to be built parcel, property line to property line. They have nowhere to set up. But do you want them to be able to set up on the street, in the park, in the parallel parking along Main Street, where we have seen some before? You know, it's kind of, you've got people walking to their window that might be in the travel lane. So it's kind of to set those regulations of where they could go, can't, and shouldn't. And, you know, making sure that they're meeting the requirements whenever it comes to their setup being, you're, we've talked about visibility of the triangles at an intersection. So where something has to be under a certain height or over a certain height, if it's within that triangle. And it's really more of a safety concern, but basically, what we're looking for is feedback from y'all, look through, say, oh, I do like this, or maybe we need to, I like this, but maybe we need to change it this some. This will be something that's further discussion with other departments in the city. But that way, we kind of have some feedback with how it relates to our table of uses, mostly. And then our fire department provided some of the handouts. So, and these are not on the slideshow, because I got these this afternoon. So I've got, our fire department sent over a statement from Fire Marshal's office out of Charleston. Different checklists. That's really our biggest thing, too, is making sure that they're fire safe, that they're not too close to a building. You know, if they, if their food truck was one that was hitched to a vehicle and towed, that they know, hey, you've got to unhook this, and you've got to move your vehicle. You can't have it hooked together if you've got these fuel sources. There's some of the big things with it, but it's really more to formalize everything with it.
Is there anything the city does as far as the few trucks that we have now require them to have like a license or permit or inspection?
So, yes, currently, they still have to fill out a business license application. We still have to have written permission from property owner that they can set up there. They have to do a co-compliance inspection, essentially where it's checking, fire department's going out, fire chief is looking to make sure you've got the right type of extinguisher for your fuel source. You're reminding them, hey, make sure that you unhook that trailer before you start doing. And our, our fire chief will go in, if they're not following, shut them down until they correct it, which is allowed under the fire code for that, because it's a safety concern for it.
Does DHEC do any kind of inspections on food trucks?
So they have to have a, I hate trying to say this word, a commissary kitchen for that, yes, that has to be checked off. That is also another requirement. I should have one of the co-compliance forms. That is another requirement, is that we have to have that approval from them before they're getting a business license. It's not being issued until every one of those co-compliance inspections are completed and passed.
Or are we strictly talking about food and beverages?
Mobile, yes. That would, this would provide a clear direction for us administrative-wise of how to go through that procedure, more of a formal, formal list of rules and requirements for it. You couldn't leave it, and I'm, some of these, I'm pulling from what City of Greer had on yours, was examples being, you can't leave the truck parked overnight with it. You can't, may not be able to park in the public right of way, set up to seal. It's just making sure, it's really a safety concern with it, making sure that they're where they should be, and far back enough that somebody's not going to get injured trying to order at a window.
I think it's a lot better deal than, you see so many people in Morris, just sitting on grills on the side of the road, cooking burgers and whatever, and selling right out of a parking lot. I mean, I think this, the truck is a better deal than that. At least they control it.
We can track them a lot better that way as well.
So would this have anything, would this apply to the food vendors at the Baga? Or not?
Our zoning ordinance does have a section for conditional uses that refers to temporary uses. Fairs and festivals being, fall into that category. That is something that I've been working on to try and get that regulated better. There would be, and that was actually a question, once the agenda got posted yesterday, that was asked of me, was how's this going to affect, you know, with special events, the Baga, Downtown Tuesdays, different, say, the car show. A lot of these requirements, you still have to have all your safety features in place. That's a given. Fire chief is going to shut you down if you don't, until you fix it, because that is, this is, it's a safety concern. But if, this would be a city council decision as far as what requirements may be waived or lessened for city-sponsored or city-approved events with that. So still, it's not really changing anything that's already been going on within the city. It's really more so we have a clear, formalized set of rules for them.
Do we have any regulations in place for other types of mobile vendors? Suppose we had a turnaround anymore to a skate store, wants to creep up on it?
So with that, it goes back to whenever we're looking at the use table. If it meets the category for whatever that sick code is, and then it has to meet the regulations for, is it allowed in this district, or is it not? Example with these is just looking at drinking places, a used example. So you can have eating places in the healthcare districts, essentially over where the hospital, nursing home, fitness center, all that is. You can't have drinking places there. Drinking places is essentially, it's referring to alcoholic beverages. That's not allowed there, but you see our eating, drinking places are in C1, C2, and industrial. Overall, that, it wouldn't change it. The biggest thing it's going to change is where they can set up on the lot. So it'd be more, it'd be more like adding it as a conditional use. Those conditions have to be met in order for it to meet the zoning ordinance requirements. Basically, is what y'all would be looking at from that standpoint.
Any more discussion?
No, Ms. Kirsten, so we're talking about if someone's got a private lot, undeveloped, that's something we should consider if it's a, but the zoning is still applies regardless, right? It's still, that's what, if I'm understanding right, this is current, not current, current, but this is what we're going with right now.
This is, this is the currently adopted table of uses that's in the zoning ordinance. So essentially, is wherever you would want a eating place, a restaurant, some type of food establishment, or?
I guess, I guess my question is like, if O'Reilly's has a big parking lot, or whatever, that's clearly a commercial, kind of a public business.
Right.
Or if there's a vacant lot, that's, say, the gentleman in the back owns, that's just sitting on a corner right there, is there anything that applies different to any of that?
It still falls in that same C2 zoning district.
It just doesn't matter, it just matters what.
It doesn't matter if there's, if there's a structure there or not.
As long as they have written permission, they can pull up on a piece of grass.
Exactly. Exactly. And then we have that on file as well, so it's, you know, they're not, nobody's saying, oh, they're trespassing on it. We have that written permission in their file, where that property owner has signed off saying, yes, this business is allowed to be here. That we are already doing.
Anything else?
Take a look at this. Is it again?
Look through, you can see their ordinance, their complete ordinance, it's really thorough for it. And just see, I mean, you can mark up your sheets, I like this, or I like this, but I don't like this part, can we make this different? Type deal with it, is what I'm really wanting feedback for.
Do you want it back before the next meeting, or at the next meeting?
Depends on how much each of you have at a time. Maybe before, if possible, and then we can just have a group discussion with it at the next meeting with kind of everybody's feedback.
Everybody good with that? Okay, you good? You good down there?
Good.
Let's sit down on that item. Let's see. Staff report.
So, I kind of, well, it kind of matters, you will have, it is. So, um, I kind of, well, uh, kind of matters, you will have, um, it is hopefully going to city council in the next, their October meeting. Um, will be an annexation request that's been filed. So that, depending on how the council meeting goes, will probably be on the October 23rd Planning Commission meeting. I think that's the only thing, other than, you know, you know that Silver Oaks is gonna come back up.
Right.
Is there anything else we had? We have no holiday, the city hall is closed between now and your next meeting. I will add, because my phone's been ringing a lot this afternoon with it, that there are two storms that National Weather Service, the county is keeping an eye on with. I've been getting emails and reminders from DNR and all is, you know, hey, remember it is still hurricane season. So while we were in this meeting, I was just gonna put out that reminder that, you know, make sure that you've got any debris cleared up as much as possible. Pay attention to whatever forecasts are coming out with it. You have to do your own, whatever your family's used to doing, but if it does come to that and it is gonna have an impact on us, make sure that all your outside tables, chairs, umbrellas, trash cans are somehow secured. Is the biggest thing, but other than that.
Okay, at this time, um, we're gonna be open for public comment and we ask that you sign up in advance. And we have one person, Neil Johnson. Is Neil Johnson here?
Yeah.
Okay, if you'd like to come forward.
I would. I'm sorry.
You just, uh, you didn't do that, did you?
I signed up.
I got it right here.
Yeah.
Well, I've signed up.
No, Neil, I got it. Where you signed up on it?
Yeah.
I am the owner of the Silver Oaks Colleges, and I just kinda want to come to you guys as humble as I can and ask for considerations being the events that take place coming into the community. Trying to do a project here. A little upset, um, but been patient, humble in this whole process and the fact that we had our first four lots approved in February and have been asking and been recorded in the box, actionable this year. But I still don't have any uses since February. Asked kindly repeatedly during engineer, I've had multiple meetings, been promised it was coming, yet still nothing. Been okay with it, tried to work with everybody on it. I just feel like, y'all were in my shoes for a minute. How would that make you guys feel? And is that fair? You know what I'm saying? Y'all own property you've got no access to, no use to, spent a lot of money to get it there. Would y'all feel like y'all could treat fairly? Secondly, we submitted the Silver Oaks Colleges on June 3rd for it to come to planning commission. Don't understand the change of events, had multiple meetings since then, trying to figure out why it's not moving forward. There is a state law that says any planning commission comments not back to us within 60 days is middle. It's an automatic group. Back then came and went, we still wanted to come back and keep working alongside of you guys, never any pressure. But yet got promised that it would be in August. It got pulled the night before and still had no comments. Did not get comments till September 5th. Immediately worked to address those comments in hopes that we would get moving forward somewhere tonight. Again, being pushed. I'm asking for some considerations of still wanting to work, not against, but with. We're all neighbors here. I mean, I wanna treat it fairly, but I wanna respond fairly. I'm asking to open back up business and do a conditional approval on my phase two. So that I have all my SC D O T permits ready for approval and pickup on lots one through four, all I need is an approval letter. If I get an approval letter on phase two, I can go ahead and get those permits coming. If I wait another month, I'm working with you on phase three. I, I want to be received by the community. I wanna respect everybody around here. I own property, my farm's just up the street. I was born and raised in Myrtle Beach. I got a lot of friends in Morris. I'm not a big natural developer. I'm a small, I'm a small businessman. These are the things that my business needs to be successful. I, two years now since I passed zoning and annexation to the city. And I lived further along than I was two years ago, right? And I feel like you guys are a growing city. Again, I want to be patient. But I feel like it may be to be an opportunity for some good faith here, to kind of keep relationships strong moving forward. But I think that being there's no comments on phase two, it's gonna take me a month or so to get D O T back. I'll be back here September. I'll sit down with Meredith. I'll sit down with anybody and work with anybody on this. But I feel like in good faith, maybe y'all could give me something since I've been sitting around since February, but nothing. But if all, all laws, all rule, met all conditions and comments, so I've shown my ability to be responsive. But yet I'm not getting any response. And as a governor, you guys are the government, but we're supposed to work together here. I just don't feel like it's, I feel like it's a little one-sided right now, and I feel like it'd be feeling good to get a little something. Could you guys consider something like that?
I agree. Meredith, what's been the old one?
So, we have some, some multiple submissions and all going at the same time. But Neil is correct that these comments are really more phase three, not phase two. So that would be up to planning commission if they wanted to allow that condition as long as we get a chance to go back and look through that resubmission. That's what we're.
And I still have to pull them back and get a site work permit from you, but this allows for the state stuff to start rolling. If I wait another month, I probably won't have anything to work on until December or January. That'll put him near three on a small subdivision.
So a conditional approval would give him what he needed to start on phase one, is that correct?
Phase two.
Just allows, if I got the, if I got letters from you guys on phase one and two approvals, all I gotta do is send that SC D O T. I can't go to work on it until I get my permits, and I gotta come back to Meredith with the D O T permits. And then she can give me a site work permit, and then I can get to work just on the nine lots, and that's all I'm really after right now.
And all the comments were on phase three?
On this, yes.
Except where mailbox was gonna be for phase two, that was the only comment on phase two.
And truthfully, whenever it comes to mailboxes, the postal service kind of dictates that for us on it. The biggest thing that we have whenever it comes to the mailbox is a sign on the street address for it. But really the comments are for phase, really for phase three. So phase two would be these lots and this pond, right?
Yes, ma'am.
For that.
The D O T would like to have both phase one and phase two approvals at the same time.
Because they're all up against the, the road.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Just those nine is what I'm asking for right now.
So, I mean, I've gotta get you the letter for phase one, but with phase two, that would be if y'all were good with doing a conditional on it, the condition would just be to make sure that everything does meet the requirements that we have on the, and I only say that because I've not had a chance to go through the whole new submission, so to speak, corrected submission with it, as long as there was no changes with what we had before for phase two, right? Neil, there wasn't any changes from?
When they shortened pads for your comments, so we shortened the pads back to sixty-four to sixty.
Right.
So all, all the issues addressing stormwater, pullouts in the Cox Road, that can be done independently for phase two? It's not a phase two and three thing together?
So you could do a conditional approval in, for phase two in order for him to pull, submit a D O T to get the construction permits to start with the building pads, the sites. Driveways, whenever it comes to driveways, we don't have anything in the ordinance, so to speak, for it because D O Ts, like they, like Ashley was explaining, is gonna dictate how those driveways are with the turn of grounds, because it has direct access to that state road. There's really nothing that I'm seeing between them that we couldn't at least get those lots going so he can pull for D O T.
I agree.
On that.
I don't have my book in front of me to figure out. I had something to the agenda.
Well, I mean,
I mean, we could.
You should take action on it, it's, because it's not.
You're the chairperson, you can do whatever you want.
If you wanted to revisit that, go back to that item. If you wanted to make a motion to revisit that item on the agenda.
We would have to have a discussion which we already have currently.
And this is prelim.
Is there any more discussion, questions? So do I have a motion to go back and open up that business item?
Motion to open up business item number one. And amend that for conditional approval of phase two.
Because you have the approval for phase one, correct?
I need a letter.
Y'all get a little approval, that's what I'm saying.
We approved it in February, but I still have approval letter and I can't get it via.
So we'll get both of those.
Council, or does that come from?
It's from us, whether.
Okay. We need to do the letter.
So Chris's motion is to?
Open up business item number one.
And I'm in for a conditional approval of phase two.
Do I have a second to open it?
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we've reopened it. Now, we're having discussion again. And the subject is giving him conditional approval for phase two and a letter for phase one.
Well, the, the letter you don't have to do with it. That's something that we have to get to.
Okay.
I still have to work, when I have to get the conditional approval back in SC D O T to release permit from any one. Okay. Whatever just gets the ball through, because this is gonna take time on the state side for things to come back. And then I have to come back to her for site work permits.
Right. So it's, they're gonna come back to us with that, with that phase either way.
You're not letting me go to work. You're just letting the red tape keep moving down the lines from you guys. You guys, you guys get the final decisions and then it goes to state, but all of our state stuff has been decided on and approved, just waiting your, your file.
Since you've reopened the topic I spoke on, and we will hopefully be back at the next meeting to address phase three. Because we assume comments will be back if there are any outstanding comments. So then hopefully you can approve with no conditions, phase three at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, so is there any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a conditional approval of phase two. Based on.
Conditional approval to move forward with state permitting.
Okay, conditional approval to move forward with.
That's all for us. Okay, thank you all very, very much.
Second.
Okay, Eric seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So moved.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Okay, now, since we went back to that business item where?
You could, let's go back to comments. There wasn't anybody else that signed up.
Okay.
If you want, press comments.
Okay, does the press have a?
I didn't sign up, but I have some comments.
Okay, if you could come forward and introduce your name. I know you come, you have come here before, just in the future, just trying to remember.
Okay, um, my name is Candace Grelle, candidate for city council, wrote on November 4th. Um, I have a couple of questions about the planning commission in general, and then I have a couple of questions about the food truck. So, the planning commission questions, why are we approving 2024 minutes? They're over a year old.
Well, I, I'm not gonna say anything except I know that she has been severely understaffed.
Okay.
And I have been in her office and, um, and seen what she has to do, and that's the only thing I can tell you from my perspective.
Understood. I think that perhaps we need to address that then, because the public deserves to be able to see those minutes.
I think it has. This young gentleman right here is actually assisting her now. So they hired another person to help.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. The other question about planning commission is, so you mentioned there's a city council meeting on the 6th of October. And depending on what happens then, an annexation request may show up on the October 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Why is it though that the deadline to be included in the, in the October 23rd meeting is September 3rd on your posted deadline?
Do you want me to explain that one?
Yes.
So with that, um, that is for if an applicant, so say you're already in the city and you're submitting an application to planning commission. That, um, application deadline is really more your rezoning request, your, um, plating action item. That would be the soonest that it could be on, say, this meeting because of going through review processes. The reason that annexation would end up if it's on the city council meeting on the 6th and then come, show up on planning commission meeting on the 23rd is because there's a set time that planning commission has to discuss it and get report back to city council within that timeframe. So that's where those deadlines really don't apply whenever it comes to annexations. The clock starts whenever, um, city council gives that direction and refers it to planning commission.
Okay, that works. Thank you. All right, um, and then food truck. So, a couple of questions on that. There was mention of a 250-foot distance requirement? Is that like something already in writing somewhere? Is that? Or was that just something that was thrown out?
So, what, what we're doing is taking input from other municipalities, training, Meredith, and to other types of places. Really, like you said, in an attempt to put in writing more or less what the city is always practicing. The city has some regulations that do apply to food trucks currently, namely fire code you mentioned.
Right.
But this really is something that the ball is just now being rolled. So we don't even have a draft of a text amendment that we would even begin to vote on right now. So once we return next month with our little scribbles and write-ups and whatever else, we'll give those to Meredith. Then we can kind of begin that discussion, and there will be public comment period with that.
So with this, it would be, um, there will be, and this is, this is not a one-step thing with it. This essentially would be kind of going back to city council as a planning commission report saying, we would like this modified in our zoning ordinance. And that'll kind of, that's what I was saying is it'll involve other department discussions and city, um, council committee discussions for that because it's not something that is strictly under planning commission. It's really under administration. But planning commission and the zoning ordinance use tables factor into where they can go. If you don't mind, I'll answer about the distances on that. So with the handouts, the city of Greer, they have in there a 250-foot radius says, but theirs actually reads, where was that page?
It's, no, it's, yeah, it's right there. Okay. I know where it is in the ordinance, so I, ordinance, I don't know where it is in there, but that's it.
This one, so it's, theirs literally reads that the vendors may not operate within 250 feet of an existing restaurant while it is open for business unless written permission is given by the restaurant owner or if approved by the city as part of an event, is how theirs is. But they kind of, theirs was really good in the aspect that they hit every point that you wouldn't necessarily think about just going through from a, a blank page. So it's look through and see, hmm, if I like this one or if I like this, but I don't like that 250 feet. I want it to be if they're in a hundred-foot radius, that type thing. It's just going by the, kind of the example layout that they had with it.
All right, well, let, let the record show that I think 250 feet is very far, like from an existing business. I mean, that's, one end of the bright main street to the other, like you'd never be able to set up anywhere. One end of the main street to the other, like you'd never be able to set up anywhere from a...
Existing restaurant, it's not...
And it's, and it's not that you couldn't. It's just if you are within whatever that radius is, or a brick and mortar restaurant is within that radius.
And 250 feet is just a number that's...
Right. Yeah, I just think that's excessive for such a small...
And I might agree with you. I haven't, I mean, we haven't quite had time to process it.
That's good, that's good then. Yeah, because I do think like, so the other question was, what if you have multiple trucks on the same lot? Being able to have like a food truck park or something, would they need to be 250 feet apart? Because that would be really extra silly. So if, but I think having food trucks, like, you know, we do Downtown Tuesday. The other businesses, even, it doesn't matter if you're selling, you know, slushies or ice cream, let's say ice cream, because Richie's has ice cream. If an ice cream truck shows up, Richie's is still gonna sell ice cream. So it's not actually gonna hurt business, it helps all the businesses work, community, and that's what we should be focusing on, is helping each other. So, yeah, consider the distance. The other thing is temporary uses. So you talked about like they have to show all of their approvals and stuff, and also they could only set up in areas zoned for, like where a restaurant could go?
Basically is what we've been using.
So what happens if someone wants to have a party or a wedding in their yard? Can a food truck come? Like, is the city going to address that?
Well, you would look at it as, it, that essentially would be no different than you hire in, um, Joe Cox to cut your grass. We don't say that, no, he's a business, he can't go to your yard and cut your grass, operate and business there. But what you're looking at with a wedding is really more of like a catering service. So they're going there to perform a service, they're not, they're open to the public for business, if that makes sense.
Okay. All right, yep, that's good. And final question. Same kind of thing, temporary use case, like a Downtown Tuesday or something. Do they still need to go through all the steps with the city, or potential steps with the city to get approvals and licenses to set up for one night ever?
That's where it'll kind of, I'm, I'm trying to keep it kind of under planning commission, so that would fall under the business license, under the admin side of it. And that goes back to how the ordinance defines doing business in the city.
Yeah. I, I just, I say that because the city lacks resources. And do we wanna make it harder for people in the city already to do their jobs because they have to approve all these licenses constantly just because someone wants to come Tuesday night or something? You know, that's a lot of extra effort. And for what, how much is a business license? Like, I mean, are you gonna make revenue off of that? So don't cause more work than necessary.
We have a lot of stuff we have to consider.
Yeah.
It's, it's good information you're sharing with us.
Those are all my notes, just...
Thank you.
But thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. If you'd like, no? Anybody else in the audience, media? Good? Okay. Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to tell us about?
I don't have anything, would y'all have any questions for me?
So I have a motion to dismiss those on me.
Make a motion to dismiss.
All right. Any one second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, son.